Here.
Commissioner Horson.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Kebamaki.
Here.
Commissioner Ma.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Nemiroff.
Here.
Commissioner Horace.
Here.
Chair Pla.
Here. So, the first order on the agenda tonight is approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any changes or modifications to the meeting agenda? You're going to take a motion to approve?
We approve the agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Second up tonight is approval of the meeting minutes. There are two on here from the January 13th meeting and the January 27th meeting. Are there any changes or modifications noted on those meeting minutes? Yes, sir.
At the 27th meeting regarding the West Shore Drive property, I don't, my recollection is that was not an unanimous, unanimous motion. I thought there was.
One.
Yeah, it was.
There was one, one name on that one.
Mr. Chair. Also on the 27th minutes, Section 10, there were Planar Teague discussed the number of teardowns, 2014 is repeated twice.
Any other notations? So, Jack, you'll update these, correct? Okay, thank you. With that, I'd take a motion to approve these.
Motion to approve meeting as submitted with corrections submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. So, next up are public hearings. There's one on the agenda tonight, conditional use permit at Edina Public Schools. Carrie, if you'd want to introduce that, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. Before you tonight is a conditional use permit requested by the Edina Public Schools. It's located out at the high school site. I'm sure you're all familiar with that site located between Crosstown Highway and Valley View Road. It's an 86-acre parcel. It houses both the high school and the Valley Middle School. Aerial shot of the site. What the applicant is requesting here is in addition to the high school, 142,000 square foot addition to the west side of the high school be located as shown on the screen. This would house the ninth graders in the future. Currently, ninth grade, half the ninth grade is located at the Valley Middle School located on the site and the other at the Southview Middle School. So, the idea is to bring all the ninth graders onto the campus. So, in essence, we'd be having half of the ninth grade as the increase in students to the site. This project is the result of the successful school referendum that was approved and passed by the Edina voters back in May of 2015. So, this is a, let's start with this. So, the location of the building meets all of our minimum setback requirements, which are 50 feet. The addition would be located over 200 feet from the nearest lot line. So, all of the required setbacks are met. In terms of parking, the parking is based on the two largest places of assembly, being there's two schools on the site. We took the two auditoriums. Sorry, I'm battling a little bit of a cold tonight, so I'll try to get through it as best as I can. But based on the seating in those auditoriums, 889 stalls are required. So, the site is overparked. There's 983 parking stalls that would result after the addition. One of the parking lots here would be expanded. So, they're over the code requirement in terms of parking spaces. In terms of height, the height of the building also meets our 40-foot requirement. Some of the tallest locations on the addition would be about 39 feet. So, to acclimate you a little bit, might be hard to see on the screen. But this site highlighted here in yellow, that's the addition. This is the existing school. So, this demonstrates, gives you an idea of the height. It'll sit lower than the existing, the existing school. You can see here is the addition on this angle. Now, maybe the next graphic shows it a little better. So, you can see the addition here and the existing school. You can see that the high part of the school, that received a variance a number of years ago for height. So, again, code compliance for the height. The applicant does have a materials board that they will go through. It would be consist, be built of brick and metal panel essentially to match the existing structure. In terms of landscaping, so based on the perimeter of the site, our typical requirement for landscaping, where we base it on the perimeter of the site, they would need 208 overstory trees. The existing trees would satisfy that requirement. As you can see, there's a lot of trees down along the creek, along the side lot line, and along in this area here. They are, however, proposing to plant, it's about 47 new trees. Those are those highlighted in green. So, again, an additional 47 overstory trees, that again would be code compliant. In terms of bicycle parking, based on the number of parking stalls, just 40 bike racks would be required here. They're proposing far more than that, and I'll just quickly show you the locations. They're indicated as the number one. So, there would be, there's actually six locations. So, one here adjacent to the middle school, one here, one here, right here, here, and then back here. So, again, would far exceed our requirements. In terms of grading and drainage, our city engineer has reviewed the proposed plans, finds them acceptable. He has had a few comments in his review memo. Again, this is, would be reviewed by the watershed district as they are our regulatory authority. Generally, the drainage would be directed to one of these lower fields here, and there's a drain tile system that would be installed. This area here sits higher than the adjacent homes here to the east. So, to build in some added protection, the city engineer is requiring that an additional drain tile be located along that back lot line there. That again would be required by the watershed district as well. So, this request requires a conditional use permit. And again, it meets all of our standards for setback, et cetera. Kind of unusual, considering all some of our past projects, we typically have variances associated with it. So, the primary issue, does the proposal meet the conditional use permit criteria? In this case, staff believes that it does. So, just in going through the criteria. First, that the project would not have an undue adverse impact on governmental facilities, utilities, services, or existing or proposed improvements. Now, there is adequate utilities that serve the site. Obviously, it's an existing school, been there a number of years. So, there is adequate utilities to serve the site. Two, will traffic generate, will generate traffic within the capacity of the street serving the property? A traffic study was conducted by SRF. Matt Passina is here from SRF to answer any questions you might have in regard to the study. But it does conclude that the existing roadways can support the addition. There are one notable change that we're suggesting, and this is from the traffic study, and that's aligning Chapel Drive with this westerly entrance. The west entrance currently is located right here. We would suggest this be shifted over. That's also noted in the city engineer's memo. He did have a revision to his memo, and I handed that out. It's in front of you this evening. Now, we're looking for this to take place within a three to five-year time period of making that shift. This is an issue that's come up in the past with our traffic safety committee in regard to this, the alignment of these two intersections here with Chapel Road and the driveway coming out. So, with pedestrians and bikes that move by, it gets somewhat confusing for traffic as there's cars waiting in both locations. So, bringing those together is a much safer solution. Third, does not have an undue adverse impact on the public health, safety, or welfare. This is an existing use today, no change on the property, so no adverse impact on those conditions. Fourth, will not impede the normal and orderly development or improvement of other property in the vicinity. Again, there's really no impact to the adjacent properties. The addition and a lot of the site work is located far away from adjacent homes. So, no restrictions on existing properties around the site. And the site is, or the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Schools, high schools are conditionally permitted use in our R1 zoning district. So, with that, in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the findings that are outlined in your staff report and the conditions that are outlined as well. With that, I can stand for any questions that you might have.
Any question for Carrie?
So, Carrie, with the conditions with the city engineer, are they also requesting the relocation of that pedestrian crossing, or was that not part of this? I didn't see it, and I didn't know if that was.
The pedestrian crossing that goes with the realignment?
Is that included with that?
I think that was in with that, right?
Yes.
It's on the screen now, Joan.
Yeah, I'm just reading the condition, well, what the engineer was saying.
Yeah, so we would want to incorporate kind of this scheme.
Okay, so we should include that with our conditions of approval?
That would be great.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Nemiroff?
Carrie, with regard to the second condition, the second condition says, "will generate traffic within the capacity of the streets serving the property." But as I read the, and maybe the traffic consultant will speak to this, but as I, as I read the traffic report, it appears that the traffic is already below standard. And as I read the report, what I kind of take away as the thought is, is not that it will generate traffic within the capacity of the streets serving the property, but that it will not generate traffic materially adversely worse than the current traffic affecting the streets. I mean, could, am I reading it wrong, or, I know I'm giving, coming to my own conclusion, but could you point where it says that, I mean, am I reading it wrong, for example, to say that the current traffic is considered not to meet standards?
And I'll look, the traffic engineer speaks to that, but the overall capacity of the roadways, the addition, wouldn't have an adverse impact on that. It's really just within those peak times when school is letting, letting out or starting. That's when there's an issue on the roadway. So, it's handling those peak times.
Yeah. So, does that mean that, other than the peak times, that the roadway is adequate, but during peak times, the roadway may not be adequate?
Right, and that's where the suggestion of having the police officer direct traffic during those times, you know, measures to handle the traffic at that time.
Okay. I'll think about it some more. We'll probably talk more later tonight. Thanks, Carrie.
Mr. Forrest?
The calculation for parking that was provided in the staff report is different than that provided in the proponent's narrative, which is on page 887, they use a calculation based upon the number of classrooms and the number of students, and they cite one, a section of our code for that. So, which, which one is it supposed to be?
We take it whatever generates the most amount of parking spaces. And so, that's the.
There's actually more. I mean, they came up with 938 required, but it's still underneath the 983 that's proposed. And then, you said that, you pointed out where the different bike spaces, bike parking places were, and said they had more, but I missed a number. How many bike parking?
Yeah, I don't have an exact number. That might be a question for the school district, just how many racks within each of those six locations? That would be something we'd review at the time of the building permit.
Great, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Do you have to take the engineering report, I guess it's number, number 10 under the water utilities, create a water loop connecting to Creek Valley Road? Is that a recommendation, or is that, will that be a requirement?
That is a condition, yes, that that would be required.
Okay, thank you.
Carrie, I had a couple of questions, and Commissioner Forrest kind of hit on one of them with the parking. I was trying to understand, too, what the difference is in the, you said the two places of assembly versus the, and maybe the traffic engineer can address that, but I was just trying to understand why they were different.
Yes, they had different numbers than I had for the number of classrooms and teachers. But when I ran the calculation, I thought I had the highest number.
Okay. And then, what is, if anything, or what is the school district proposing as far as, are they proposing that traffic mitigation, aligning those streets up right now, or what are they proposing as far as with the addition, an additional square footage?
Their submittal just left the existing westerly entrance in its, in the location that it is today.
Okay.
It was a result of our traffic study.
Had they been, was there anything in here about, you know, tying in with the city's living streets policy or safe ways to school? Was there any discussion on that with their proposal?
Yeah, but that's our, our engineering department's review. You know, when they're looking at the plans, they're looking at it through the lens of the living streets, and so the engineering memo reflects those conditions. You know, we have a sidewalk out front already.
Yeah.
Now, that's within our sidewalk plan. It's there already, so no improvements that we needed to make there.
So, the school district is not submitting any improvements for the surrounding traffic or the pedestrians? I'm trying to understand.
Beyond their site?
Well, beyond, or in their site. I mean, beyond, in the front of the site, I mean, everything here is going on in the back, which you're going to have to do things, but what I'm talking about is site access also from, you know, from car, kids walk into school, things like that. Are they proposing anything different with this addition?
I can let the school district speak to the specifics of how the traffic's going to move in and out of the site. Generally, the same?
Generally the same.
With the exception of that, you know, the staff recommendation to shift that westerly entrance.
Okay. Anything else for Carrie? Commissioner Carr?
One other question, it's related, has to do with public safety. And again, it appears as though there may be an increase in the number of bike racks being added to the site, and I'd like to understand what bike pathways they are within the site, because there's car traffic, and so you have to have a safe path for bikes. And then, on the city-owned property, the streets, are there any bike paths leading to the school? I just, I've driven by there many times, and I haven't really thought about that issue, but that goes back to the living streets policy that we have. So, my question address, is addressed to both the city-owned property as well as the school property.
Yeah, I'll let the district speak to the specifics on the site, how they're going to move them around the site. I believe Valley View is marked as a bike lane. I've noticed that in the, in the city's bike plan. I'm not sure of the exact markings out there, but it is a bike route, Valley View.
Is it marked out there? Sorry, one last question, Carrie, and maybe, I don't know if it came up or not, but, so now, today, there's a ring road around there, and I'm assuming fire department access goes all the way around the site. So, what's happening when you close that off? Has the, has the fire trucks been looked at? Has that been gone through with the fire department? And then also, how, with the lower pieces there, with the gyms and things, how has emergency access gotten to in those areas? Are people driving down in the lowest levels, or?
Yeah.
Or what's the plan for those pieces?
Yeah, the district has worked real closely with our fire department, emergency access, the turning radius. So, they have, they contemplated have, keeping that ring road around the site. In the end, they've settled on that cul-de-sac, and so they've worked with our fire department to make sure there's enough turning radius down at the end where they, a fire truck can make that maneuver down there. So, they could get at it from both sides. They just can't go all the way around.
Do you know how they get access to the proposed gymnasiums on the lower levels? You know, on the, you know, it'd be.
Down below?
Down the hill, or how is, how is all that set up? Do you know?
Yeah, they would have to access, let's see if we've got a graphic. And correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe they would come in with the access point off of the roads that extend in? Is that? For the lower fields?
Does anything come from the other direction?
Let's see.
I guess there's no road from the, from the west side.
There is a road from this side. Is it right here? Yeah, this location right here would be another potential access.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that it was the fire department had hopefully looked at this and gone through everything, right?
They have, yep.
Okay. Commissioner Nemiroff?
I personally just want to answer Commissioner Carr's question. As you come up the hill on Valley View, there's a, there's essentially a bike lane on the north side, and it's decent size. It does kind of end right when you get to the intersection. The intersection kind of juts out, and you have to go where the traffic is if you're biking.
Anything else for Planar Teague? Well, thank you, Carrie. Would the applicant like to present at this time? You'd step to, you know, you have the podiums. If there's something in the middle, if you want to present, they can give you a speaker if that needed.
We have no additional visuals to present, and so, my name is Von Dirks. I'm with Wald Architects, and I'll be speaking for the school district. We have other individuals from the district here if I need additional help to answer questions as we go forward. Almost everything in the city report, we've said, yes, this makes a lot of sense. We've worked very closely with the city in all the plans and the different agencies to try and get to something that works for not only the school, but also for the surrounding communities. The only issue that we have is the realignment of the drive. Not because we disagree with the fact that that intersection needs to be looked at. We're just not sure that that one solution that was developed in the last week is the final solution or should be tied to this permit. There's a number of different factors. The one that jumps out at us the most is, we worked very closely with the neighbors in the surrounding community and their concerns with traffic, especially on Creek Valley Road. That was a big area of contention as we looked at the project. By realigning that drive, we have a big concern that it's going to force traffic or encourage traffic into the Chapel Drive neighborhood, because now that will be the most direct access point into the high school as opposed to coming from Antrim. So, we see a major impact to traffic coming to that area. We're also not sure that there's been enough study in relationship to the ALTA study for the streets. And what we would do here, we do think something needs to be done. We've talked about the fact that we will be redoing almost all the paving in the southwestern corner of the site in the year 2021. We'd like to move towards that as our solution point to this, and we also think that it would be beneficial for the city and the school district to work together as we look at all of the issues along Valley View Road.
It might be best if you could, could you point this out on a plan as you're speaking through all this?
Absolutely, it's.
You're going through a lot of roads and things, and you lost me. I don't know about anybody else, but.
Sorry. So.
Oh, you'll have to get a microphone from. What's that?
So, currently, Antrim is the one that comes in right on the corner, which is where the police officer is in the morning, helping to direct traffic. Chapel Drive is the one that runs through the neighborhood directly to the south on Valley View Road, and the access point would come in after running through the neighborhood and come right up into this point. We believe that a number of vehicles will want to turn and access through that neighborhood to come in on a direct access into the site instead of dealing with the corner intersection at Antrim and coming down and making the right into the site. We're taking a number of steps as part of the city requirements in terms of how we access the central access point into Valley View, looking at our drive drop-off lane and making improvements to that to make that an entrance only as opposed to an exit. So, this will remain an exit coming out from the site. But the alignment, not only would it drive traffic through that, but it also results in about 35 to 40 lost parking spots onsite, on a site where we feel we're already a little bit constrained, even though we meet the requirements. We know that there's always going to be pressure on that, and every spot is critical as we take a look through here. We want to find the right solution, but we want to work on that a little bit longer than the solution time that was proposed for this. And so, we just hesitate to make that a part of the conditional use permit to say that's the ultimate solution, and that's the one we should be moving towards.
So, what would you propose at this point for that? I mean, do you have a solution?
Well.
Have you been looking at a solution?
We have. This is the first that we've seen, the study in the last week, that moves the road from a realignment standpoint. We don't have a solution yet. As part of our discussion and part of the conditional use permit, it was pushed out until the year 2021 from our discussions. And so, while we do have time put into it right now, all we're asking is that, that's not stated as this is the solution. This is the one that we have to do. We want to find the solution. We'll come up with options in the, in that time period to find the right solution. We're just hesitant to say, yes, moving the drive to the east and aligning it is the best for all the parties involved.
So, you wouldn't, if I understand it right, you wouldn't make any changes till 2021, even though this addition would be open long before that?
Correct, and that's, that's what's being proposed right now in the conditional use permit, is that even if that was a solution, that it would be implemented when we redid that parking in, at the 2021 point.
Commissioner Nemiroff?
A couple, a comment and a question. Two comments, actually. First of all, thank you, I mean, very insightful input. I mean, thank you for that input. A second comment, and then I'll get to my question, is it seems that there will, that there will be a change in pedestrian and bike traffic, even if everyone, all the, the same number of ninth graders that currently walk and bike to school, walk and bike when this conversion occurs, they're going to be, there's going to be a time shift, so there will be additional pedestrians, additional bikers, even without any changes. And so, that's just, and it's my question. You've raised some very good points about the difficulties that come up with an engineering solution to these issues right now. Has there been exploration of interim solutions that are non-engineering solutions? Incentives to carpool, making things easier for people to bike, or incentives to bike or walk to school?
Absolutely.
That could alleviate some of the traffic issues?
Already, that's, that's part of what's in place at the high school in terms of how they look at access to parking spaces, what's available, who's been given permit to park onsite. Obviously, with the 900-plus spaces, that wouldn't accommodate all of our licensed drivers. So, the school already has some operational features in place. One of the things that we did as part of our work is, we brought ALTA onboard to help us study our internal traffic patterns onsite from a pedestrian and bike standpoint as well, and we've looked at a number of access points onto the site. We feel we have them covered actually pretty well from the north. We're working with Nine Mile Creek in terms of a future spur to that, that bike path is being extended. We've created accessible routes up the hillside that don't exist currently. We've looked at ways to bring the bikes and the pedestrians into the site from all different areas. The only place that really is still a concern is what's occurring on Valley View, and some of the comments that you brought up earlier, is that we think that's, that section of street still has some work to be done, but it's something that needs to be done with both the city and the school district together to find the right solution there. And so, that's really where our comments are stemming from, is we want to do something to address that, that intersection. We just want to study some different options to come up with the right one. In the end, it may be the solution, but we just don't want to say this is the solution at this point and limit us to that.
Okay, I don't know. So, during finals, I drove someone to school every morning to get there, and then, and this was mid-January, it was called out, but I still saw a young woman biking up Valley View, and I, you know, I was like, wow, how do I get her on the bike team? I mean, what an impressive, what an impressive way to go. But I got a little nervous for her, not in terms of her ability to make up the hill, but in terms of the ability to not get hit by cars that are running up the hill. I mean, is there anything that can be done for that kind of person today to make it, to just give a better sense of feeling of safety?
Well, there's a, there's a number of steps that we're taking as part of this. One, we're bringing all the buses to the east side of the site and creating one common bus loop that doesn't exist on the site currently, and that will provide an area. One of the things that we understand is that we can train bus drivers, we can train our staff for how to drive. We can't train the parents. And so, we will be working for a release sequence that gets the buses off the site first, so the parents are held until those buses can exit. They exit quickly, which gives us a little bit more time for the drop-off to help speed up some of those issues. We know that the right turn in on the central lane for Valley View currently has cars backed up. We're looking at redesigning that to actually provide more capacity. We're looking at redesigning that to actually provide more capacity so that we can bring the queuing further into the site, move them towards an entrance point that's further back in the site to help address some of those concerns, which should take traffic off of Valley View Road. That's really what we're trying to do here, is reduce the traffic and cut down on those wait times to not only deal with those issues, but to work with some of the issues that the surrounding neighbors brought up, especially the amount of traffic that backs up towards that entrance into Creek Valley Road from the east. So there's a lot of different factors at play there, but it does all get down to how do we deal with Valley View Road. And because we're two large entities between the district and the city there, it just keeps pointing back to we need to work together to find the right solution for how to deal with all those entrance points.
Commissioner Forrest?
Is it possible to bring up a visual of the proposed traffic and layout, Joe? Yeah, so that we can actually see the circulation as it's being proposed? And... And meanwhile, I was going to ask, how many bikes rack spaces are you proposing?
The final count on that, Sal? Sixty-five?
Sixty-five? For over 2,000 students?
We're looking at who currently takes bikes into school right now and what the predicted increase for that is. We do have future locations that can be provided, but currently we're trying to say, okay, what do we really anticipate here and make sure that we have the right...
Yes, but this is where you put your incentive programs.
If they don't see bike racks, they might not ride right now.
Exactly. And...
I mean, it'd be who's a school to have a lot of bike racks. I mean, that's pretty simple, I would think.
And then also, what's the current number of bus spaces you have? I understand there are 25 proposed.
Current number of buses?
So how many, how many, what's the capacity, I guess? Or show, yeah, point it out, it'd be great.
So currently, buses come in here, they take a right turn. They, oh, you might need to go back in your presentation. Just looking for your existing aerial to show the difference between what is happening today and what is proposed. So today, buses come in, take a right turn into this lot, turn around in front of the commons and park end to end in the driveline of this parking lot, preventing access to, in and out of this parking lot. And there's no designated bus parking. What is proposed, that's a little hard to see on here, is buses taking that same turn in, going down the road, turning around and having a dedicated bus corral of 25 buses. The school's start times are staggered by half an hour, so the 25 buses would serve both Valley View and the high school. And that's the max number of buses that would be required at either school. So there are 30-minute staggered start times. This shared corral, located pretty equally between the two buildings, limits students walking between and behind buses as they do today. And then there's a new pedestrian path, which is the hatch just to the south of that, all those angled bus parking lots, which is a new dedicated student area to access those buses. So all of this is in an effort to make accessing buses much safer.
What's the current percentage of students that actually ride the bus every day? I mean, as, on a regular basis, not a unique student served, but I mean...
I might have to hearken back to...
Because I'm wondering too. My concern partly is you're getting another, what, net 419 students on location?
Probably about 375.
Okay, when I use the numbers in another part of the report, I came up with that. So let's say somewhere between 375, 400, whatever. And you're going to have an increased number of ninth graders who aren't driving. So that means already the visitor spaces are a little bit cramped at times. And these are parents at the age where these kids are being transported more. They're involved in different types of activities. And I'm concerned about the number of visitor spaces is one thing. And for parking and clear acts, you know, clearly, I know, I had a child who only went there for one year, so I wasn't there that much, but it was always a challenge to know where do I go next? So it wasn't clear where I was supposed to be parking or not parking. The, I liked the ALTA memorandum. That was excellent. It pointed out some very interesting things. I guess when I ask about the number of students who are using the bus transportation, it's partly because, to me, it seems like a lot of students at the middle school level are driven to school in the city. And now I might be a little bit out of date, but I even just over by South view, people who could walk easily, whether they were going there because they had music lessons early or whether they just were late getting up. I don't know. But there was a regular basis where there were a lot of students who were driven. And I think that's somewhat unique to Edina, and I don't think the numbers that are provided in the traffic standards necessarily apply. I think we have to look at the things that actually take place here. And that's why I like the ALTA report, because it actually did look at some more of the human factors as well. So for me, that just says be cautious about the numbers you're anticipating because it could be considerably higher than what you're, what you would get using the standard references. And also, that also affects on the street traffic as well. And let's see if I have any other questions here. I think that was an awesome, thank you.
I'd like to point out another thing that we did actually do in order to help alleviate some of the pickup and drop-off at the high school. Currently, all the traffic comes to a very small roundabout at this point in the building. We're actually moving the entrance point back in and creating a deeper queue line for parents picking up at the high school and bringing the exit for that around to help alleviate some of the backup we have for exiting traffic to help with expediting the exiting patterns for the high school site as well. So taking a number of steps to help, as I said, move that vehicle traffic through quicker to alleviate some of the congestion at the beginning and end of school periods.
Can you just show us if somebody is going to then pick up or drop off a student, they would go around to the right of that one parking lot, is that right?
They would come along the right side of the parking lot. There's a double width here, so we have a pass-through lane on the left, drop-off dedicated lane on the right, and extended the exiting path around to the backside to expedite how vehicles leave off the site.
So they'll just line up there then?
Correct, and give it a little deeper queue space.
Commissioner Carr?
Well, I thought you brought up some good points about this Chapel Lane and the traffic going through there. Could you show, and you mentioned that if you move the drive further to the east and put it in line with Chapel Lane, that you would lose parking spaces? Maybe you could just show the before and after shots of that, what it currently looks like, and I guess what your proposal looks like versus what it would look like with the change in that lane and how that would impact the parking spaces?
I think this drawing probably shows it the best. If you can see, the underlay is the existing traffic and parking lanes that are there. What's on top shows we lose all the spaces in this row out to this point. We lose the spaces in this row, we lose the spaces in this row, three spaces here, two spaces here, two spaces here. And so as you add all those up in terms of what's lost in that corner, it results in two about 35-plus spots.
And for clarification purposes, are you indicating that you agree with the conditions recommended by staff subject to a change in the condition having to do with the conditions required by the city engineer? And if you look at that report, are you looking at point number three, which has traffic in street? And it says include realignment and traffic control options for Westerly driveway entrances on Valley View Road in the traffic management study. And one, it says aligning the westmost entrances to make a four-way intersection with Chapel Lane.
Correct. And again, we agree that that intersection needs to be studied. Our only issue is this is one solution to look at how that might be done. We just don't want to limit it to saying this is the solution to be done. We'd like to study this. We'd like to work with the city on this to find what other options exist for that. And so that's the only point out of the entire study that we're saying. We'd like to take some more time to study this issue. We agree with all the other issues. We think they're valid points. We've tried to, like I said, work with the city extensively throughout the process to come up with the right approach. And that's really all we're asking is a little bit more consideration for this area. And again, a lot of it has to do with what we went through dealing with the neighbors on both the east and the west with Creek Valley Road and some of their concerns and issues related to traffic. We know that the high school has a big impact on the surrounding neighborhood. We just think that one of the major impacts of this is it will have a negative impact to the neighbors to the south part of the property.
And then one other question. There were two points in that under, sub-points under three. The first was aligning the westmost entrance. And the second point was narrow central entrance to create entrance only.
Correct.
Is that an issue as well?
No, we're actually, we're going to be implementing that. This will become an entrance-only point into the site. Currently, there is an exit lane that brings vehicles out here. This will be relocating all of our exiting traffic to the westernmost portion of the site. We will continue to study our drop-off lanes along Valley View as it relates to the entrance-only point. We don't have that many vehicles exiting right now. We know that vehicles currently tend to U-turns in this portion of the street, which while legal, doesn't certainly help with issues. That's something that city representatives have brought to our attention as well. And so that is an item that we've already started talking about with the city in terms of how can we study that? What should we look at from our entrance points and how vehicles deal with Valley View Road there? So we think there's a lot of concern still with how vehicles operate on Valley View Road for this stretch here. And so we'd just like to make this intersection part of that ongoing dialogue to resolve multiple issues there.
Thank you.
Commissioner? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Just for clarification on the lost parking, I believe, would you have the opportunity to replace that parking though where you have the current access? Is there ability to do that? Or do you feel like you're going to lose that parking permanently?
You could certainly fit a few spots back into there, but the triangular shape that's left over and how vehicles come back in from both sides into that exit lane would most likely have a negative impact on what we're trying to already alleviate from the exiting perspective. And so we'd rather keep our exiting traffic coming in from one side only as opposed to now having a few spots on the other side.
Okay. This is a question for Matt. So I don't, I, did you, with your traffic study, did you look at the impact on Chapel Hill? Chapel Drive, I mean?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'm Matt Pacino with SRF Consulting. I worked on the traffic operations study. Thanks for the question. We didn't specifically look at changes to Chapel as far as additional impacts. Vehicles can make those maneuvers today and do use that as a way to kind of circumvent some of the operational challenges on Valley View today.
So do you agree that if we align the intersection, make it a four-way, that that's going to bring more traffic onto Chapel?
That's the million-dollar question, I guess you could say. I mean, it has the potential to, but then again, vehicles are already making that maneuver today. So I don't, I wouldn't expect it to be a drastic change, in my opinion.
Is there a way to test that or study that or is it not real certain?
There really isn't a good way, other than, you know, kind of just waiting and seeing. If it becomes a major issue, then you would have to address it at that time.
Okay. All right. I just have one more quick one. I'm going all over, not to you, Matt. So Carrie, if we do postpone that condition, how do we enforce that in the future? Or, you know, how do we continue to look at a solution and make it happen?
I have a solution that I might offer as a condition. That we would keep that, align the westmost entrance to make a four-way intersection with Chapel Lane, and then add a comma unless another solution to address the issue has been agreed upon with the school district and the city. So the condition would read, they're going to do that alignment with Chapel unless we can come up with another solution before it gets constructed that would be agreed upon by city engineer and agreeable to the school.
And then when you're saying, when it's constructed, you're still giving them the three to five years?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir, go ahead, please.
So regarding people cutting through on Chapel, I believe right now, if you're coming from Antrim and you're turning left on the Chapel, I believe there's a turn restriction, but then again, that doesn't really stop people. So if that could be enforced, that could be part of the solution.
I would agree. Enforcement is always, you know, critical to, you know, signs of that nature and making sure that it's effective.
So there's a sign that's saying you can't turn left there?
Yeah, from, if you're heading north on Antrim, there's a no-left turn during rush hour onto Chapel.
I'm sure the kids all follow that, right?
Yeah.
It's the parents.
It's the parents, yeah, it's the parents. Yes, sir.
Mr. Dirks, regarding Creek Valley Road, first, I guess the comment was that currently, I mean, it's a cul-de-sac, there is a locked gate. Do you see that as that same sort of perimeter, that fencing would stay? I mean, there would still be some vehicle access through that?
Not only does the district need access from a service vehicle standpoint, but it's also an emergency responder access point to that area. And so it's important to keep that cul-de-sac as is. And so we're maintaining that. I know one of the questions was, how do we get to that, to the gym addition from the Creek Valley access point? The lowest floor of that gym is still 35 feet above the Creek Valley Road. And so getting vehicles down to the lower level really isn't the priority from the responder standpoint. It's getting them to the two cul-de-sacs up at the top. There is an access point from Creek Valley Road on the west that stubs out into the property, but it doesn't have the cul-de-sac access. So it could work from a critical emergency responder standpoint, but the cul-de-sac to the east is still the primary access point for the lower-level fields.
The landscaping part showed it coming like a sidewalk to that end, but there would be some sort of drivable surface coming out of that cul-de-sac?
Currently, no. No, the cul-de-sac is the turnaround point for that area.
But fire access, I mean, fire trucks would have some sort of roadway to drive into, like the fields or?
To get to the field area, that is the access point to it. And then the fields are at the same grass level. They could drive on the grass area from that point, but there's no buildings in that lower-level area.
Okay, okay. Was there any concern, any part of the traffic study with those fields there for added traffic on Creek Valley Road coming? To use those fields? I mean, would they, isn't there some expectation that there would be greater?
Not more than what currently exists. One of the things that we're trying to do with the redevelopment of the parking and the bus loop and striping that for additional parking when the buses aren't there is to provide enough parking at the upper levels and to provide an ADA access point from the western parking around the north side of the building to get to those lower-level fields to help minimize the temptation for vehicles to use that lower-level cul-de-sac to come out to those areas.
So that is the expectation that they would use that new access point?
They'd use more parking up front.
For use of those fields?
Correct. And landscaping has led to that as well in that by removing some of the brush that's along the east side of the building and planting the new trees, it gives more visual supervision of that area, makes it a friendlier access point to get to that area from that eastern side.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
One question on the parking. How many parking spots are there currently at the school? And then how many will there be with the proposal?
Sal is my detail person, so I keep looking at her.
But the reason I'm asking is just want to see, you know, are the parking spaces at the high school currently fully utilized? I'm assuming they are?
They are during events and they are during harsh weather days. So when it's cold, you see more vehicles there. They're not during, if you went there during the typical school day, you're going to find a few empty spots, but events are the most challenging standpoint.
Does the school share parking at all anymore with like churches across the street or anything like that?
They do have agreements with the churches that when available, they use those. The challenges come during funerals.
And one other question I had too is I'm not sure I see the benefit to moving that drive as proposed by the city engineer to that intersection point. I see the disadvantages of it. I think it is going to be encouraging traffic to go into that neighborhood because it's right there in front of that road. So it's going to be logical for people to go straight ahead. And you're losing parking spots.
straight ahead. And you're losing parking spots. So I guess I'm trying to understand, what are the benefits of moving that drive? And I'm not sure I clearly understand that. What's the benefits of moving it to that intersection?
I'm not sure that we see the benefits as well.
So some of the benefits of the realigning that access is, anytime you have closely-spaced intersections, you introduce additional conflict points. There's additional confusion. So when you have two intersections that are about 50, 60 feet apart, there's really a lot of maneuvers happening in a short amount of distance. And one of the big things here that we have here is actually a pedestrian crosswalk in between these two locations. So you're introducing a lot of pedestrian crossings in the middle of all these conflict points for turning vehicles. And so, what we want to do is we want to minimize those conflict points as much as we can by realigning that north access point. And then also moving the crosswalk to the east side, which would reduce any of those vehicles coming to and from the west. That gets them out of that conflict from those vehicles as well.
So there's a stop sign at Chapel Lane currently because there's a pedestrian crossway there. And is there a stop sign or will there be one? Well, or is there, I can't remember if there's a stop sign for traffic going on Valley View when it comes to that far, what side is that? That's the westerly side there. Is there a stop sign there for traffic?
There currently is no stop on Valley View there at Chapel Lane.
Okay. Now, have you given consideration to putting a stop sign there? I mean, that slows the traffic down, which actually is a good thing.
It does. A stop sign would be an option, however, given the volume that wants to come in and out of that access point during those peak periods, we feel a traffic control officer can provide an additional, or some capacity benefits and will actually provide better operations than a stop condition. It would also provide good pedestrian access in that instance as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nemiroff?
Thank you. One thing that was discussed earlier was, very abstract, was some kind of joint school and city discussion to figure out a solution, say, you know, to take more time. Is it possible to get a better sense, to make that, to make that what those discussions would be, a little less abstract, say, in terms of who the participants would be? And maybe Carrie's a question for you too, who the participants would be, the stakeholders? The, who would, you know, how would, who would have final decision, timing, perhaps, where the source of funds, if an engineering solution is developed, say, and not in 2016 or '17, but say, you know, 2018, 2019, '21, I heard, at some point, what, where the source of funds for that solution would be? Is it possible to get a little more detail on kind of the vision for what that would look like?
I don't have an exact answer for that. I would seek our traffic engineers. I know there was some talk last summer about doing some kind of a joint study and expand the scope. We would have to have the school board and our city council agree to that and whatever the financial arrangement might be. But that's something we could consider in the future.
Yeah, I mean, to that point, I'm just surprised there hasn't been more talk on this to date, it seems, you know, between the entities. I mean, everyone knows the situation here and we're adding more capacity. So I'm a little surprised there hasn't been more discussion on that as far as figuring out a joint solution. You guys are coming with one thing today. You guys are saying that's not it. I'm kind of disappointed to hear that there's not more coordination amongst that, quite frankly. So.
We did reach out and offer that.
Yeah, I don't know who, I'm just saying that you're obviously not on the same page here. It just, maybe it is what it is, but there's a lot going on and, you know, this is a huge, great project. And so I was hoping to see a little more cooperation from that standpoint. Any other comments on that? Okay. Commissioner Forrest?
Well, I guess when that referendum came around, a lot of it was promoted as, that it would benefit the city as a whole, not just the school district. And, you know, with conditional use permits, the big thing is, it's allowed use. But if there's a negative impact, then we can put conditions to address the negative impact. I think my biggest concern is the traffic impact and how it's going, you know, how it will impact the neighborhood there. It almost looks, when I'm looking at this diagram that's up on the screen now though, that you, if you just shifted things a little bit, you could actually maybe just make another corner there and then exit out in that area if you needed to. But that's, I'm not the designer on that. But it may not be as big of an issue as, you know, if it goes one way or the other as far as losing parking places. So my big thing is just, if any message to go into the record or whatever, is to really carefully consider the impact and the fact that Edina still is focused toward cars a lot as far as dropping kids off at school. And as much as I'd like to see more emphasis beyond biking and pedestrians and stuff, especially the kids that are coming from the southview area, they're, they're going to probably get their, some motorized vehicle, the majority of them, whether it's a bus or a car. So, you know, take it for, you know, how we behave here in Edina and work to promote those things. It'll make it safer and less vehicle-dependent and then, but, you know, really focus on that traffic impact.
Yeah, Commissioner, you know, everyone's pulling Commissioner Nemiroff. I'm just hoping this doesn't get papered over and, you know, just goes on and we have the same situation. But I guess that's for other people to work out.
So we aren't getting a materials board? Is that right?
There is a materials board, yes.
So, one of the goals with this is-
If you want, if you could show it on the table and then it could-
Yes, sorry.
It could be shown as part of the record and to other folks that are watching at home as well.
Perfect.
There's probably a few of them.
Okay. So as you're aware, there was extensive work done at that campus as part of the 2004 referendum in which time new materials were introduced to the exterior of the building. The exterior of the building has a nice look right now. It's been through, obviously, planning commission in the past. And so, we're not looking to change the character of the building. If anything, we're looking to expand that vocabulary, to use the same materials. The brick colors that you see here are the same bricks that were used in 2004. So barring just slight variations in clay from the quarries, should have a same look. Proportionally on the board, it looks a little out of proportion because our metal panel sample is so large compared to the brick. But where there's copper metal panel currently right now, we'll be matching that with a Kiner finish panel so that we can avoid some of the graffiti issues that we've had with some of the other projects. We still have a little bit of the clear anodized metal panel in the building. And our glass will have a very similar look. We've got some frittered glass here to help with controlling daylight and solar gain heat into the buildings as well as continued glass for the structures there as well. You'll see on the west side of the building now, it'll have many more windows than currently exist into the building because we're adding a lot of classrooms to this side. So it'll take on the same vocabulary as the classroom addition that was put on on the east side in 2004.
Sorry, I'm just going back to that Alta study. I'm just a little unclear, which schematic is being applied to your design?
Schematic number three. To be clear, the first two diagrams are the same concepts executed on the site plan as it evolved over time. So concept three relates to the most recent site plan, December 10th was when that updated site plan was given to Alta. So with concept three, he just included the other two to show the evolution of the concept as we changed drive lanes or parking layouts, things of that nature.
Okay. So the site plan that's been submitted reflects schematic three?
Yes.
Or five, whatever. Three. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicants? There may be some as we do the public hearing. I'm sure you'll stick around, right? Thanks. Thanks. So, up next, this is a public hearing. So if anyone wants to come forth and give us their comments, they can do it this time. They would want to come to one of the side microphones. You'll have about three minutes there. Give us your name and address and tell us your thoughts. We'd love to hear them.
My name is Lydia Reiner and my address is 4813 Lakeview Drive. Chair Platter, members of the commission, my name is Lydia Reiner. I am a junior at Edina High School, a cyclist for the Edina mountain bike team, where I also serve as captain. And since October, I have been commuting to school regularly regardless of weather for around three times a week.
That's great.
I am here on behalf of the Edina High School Bike Commuter Coalition to comment on the plans for increased cycling and pedestrian facilities at the high school. First of all, I'd just like to say that I approve of the increased bike parking especially and lanes in the current plan. However, I would like to see more bike lanes and wayfinding signage throughout the parking lot. And in addition, I would like to see bike lanes or shared lane markings leading to and from bicycle parking on campus. I believe that having dedicated facilities for cycling separate from pedestrians will make bike commuting more enjoyable as well as a more viable form of transportation for the student body. Separation of pedestrians and cyclists is critical for the safety of both groups. I appreciate the opportunity to express my concerns and thank you for your time and consideration of this issue.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Would I be able to get A-27, world diagram A-27 on the planning commission report for that, please? I don't know how to work that, so. My name is Mark Cook. I live at 6609 Nordic Drive. I am property that is immediately below on the west side of the road that was put in 12 years ago. So, once we set that up, I can show you where I live. I have two points that I'd, two concerns that I'd like to, that's the one, A-27. Thank you. So, my property is immediately adjacent to the road where the proposed access road is to the front door right now.
Could you maybe just point it out on the plan?
Sure.
Or just exit, or?
So this is the new ring access that's being proposed?
Oh, do you have a, oh, hang on one second. We'll get you a microphone.
Here. Thank you. So this is the new ring access that's being proposed with the entrance here as I understand it. My property is, this property right here, right below the, right below the parking lot in the road that was put in 12 years ago. So, two points. My first concern is the drainage at the site. I know there was a plan on there. They showed some drain tile proposed, but I want to give you an anecdote. 12 years ago, I bought my home. That road was put in unbeknownst to me when I purchased my home. When I closed and walked up there, the road was there. I asked the city about it. I never had a chance to come down to the planning commission because I was moving back from overseas when I bought the home. I did come down and talk to the city, the city council about it. I called the engineer. He told me that they dug a hole in the floodplain. So I shouldn't have any concern about drainage up there. My basement flooded the next spring. After that road was put in, I spent thousands of dollars correcting the issue in my backyard, drain tile, sealing my, sealing the back wall. I had to excavate all the way around my home. I had to put in additional sump pump. I'm not sure what happened, but that had not happened to the house before. I was assured by the previous owner, no water in the basement ever. So I don't know if there's causality there, but it certainly seemed like it. And I don't think adequate consideration has been given to the west side of the property for drainage. It was difficult to read the diagrams. I appreciated the one that was put up tonight. It was larger. There was, looked like there was one drain tile on the west side. But you're going to pave over a large portion of that land up there where the existing field is. And I'm just very concerned that, and you're going to put in a building that's going to block some of the subsurface flow. I assume, I'm not a geologist, obviously. But I'm very concerned about what's going to happen to the water flow and whether it's going to get pushed off the top of that hill down into the surrounding neighborhoods. And I didn't see anything in this report that addressed that kind of issue at all. So that was my first point. Secondly, is the traffic and the noise and the lighting from-
So just so you know, you have a minute left.
Thank you. This is really my greatest concern. That ring road was placed right up against the side of the school district property. No buffer is in there. The landscaping drawing was helpful. They've got three trees in there. I think it's disingenuous to say there's enough trees in this property and you're pointing to the floodplain and the creek. There's no, there's no trees up on the top of the property. There's very few. I asked, 12 years ago, I asked if they could put some pine trees in there and there was no action taken. So, you're going to put big lights up there. That lot is going to loom above the neighborhood. That hill is steep, but you're looking right down in the neighborhood. I don't know what kind of lighting they're going to put in that parking lot, but presumably there's going to be a lot of lighting and that's going to impact all of the neighborhood below it, particularly my property. I guess the other-
If you could wrap up real quick, Mark, you're beyond your limits.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There's nobody else. I can come back up for another three minutes. I guess they're saying it's overparked. I would suggest you push that road back away and put some type of buffer in there to alleviate that potential issue and make sure the lighting is considered, that they put hoods on them and don't overlight the area. There was nothing in the traffic study about the thousands of cars that go on that road right now. And literally, there's cars, I was up there walking my dog on Sunday morning, 7:00 AM, there's an event. So this is going to go all weekend, in the evenings, they're putting in-
Could you wrap it up, please? Thank you.
And that's my last point. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
I see there's a long line behind me, so.
There may be. Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing nobody else, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing.
Should I close the public hearing?
If I have a second?
Second.
All who are in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. So I'll take it back up to planning commission then. Oh, first of all, as far as Mr. Cook's comments, I don't know if anyone from the design team could kind of talk through on that, on that road, what's happening, you know, both from the drainage concerns he had and then what's happening with landscaping, if anything, along that road and what we can do there.
Yeah, good evening, commissioners. Dave Ray with Anderson Johnson Associates, the civil engineer for the project. The, if I can get to the different- The curb alignment along this edge of the property, along this edge of the lot, is exactly the same as it is today without any changes. The changes happen up in here to add some parking on this farthend. Otherwise, we're really maintaining that existing curb line. So we're not moving it any closer to the neighbor's property. We're pulling it away. We're using the existing curbing that's there. We are changing the elevation to make the grades work a little bit better in relative to the proposed building addition. Otherwise, it's no different from what it is today. The drainage has picked up with a number of catch basins along this edge as it is today. And that drainage is carried down to a couple of different places. One place is the existing stormwater pond in this location and another place is the creek discharge point at this point up in here, this location. The building addition is actually going to be taken around the north side of the building and routed to an underground retention system underneath the turf field. So that is not going towards the west. It's actually going back towards the east and with the ultimate discharge point of the creek at this point.
Are you adding more parking on the west side, though? Where is the, where is that additional drainage going to?
There's definitely more parking, yes, on this side.
How, where is that, is that still going? Where is that going to drain?
That all goes down to this basin up in here. And again, we're not adding any more addition, we're not, there's more parking, but the drainage, we, we've got it configured with the storm sewer system. There's just the same amount of hard surface goes to this spot as it does today.
Okay. And then how about landscaping along that edge? What's there today and what, are there any plans for that, that side?
The landscaping is, it's tree today. We're not proposing really any significant trees other than what Carrie had shown you in the drawing before with the trees up in this location. But the trees that were, are more or less going to be maintained through this, through this area.
Do you have any concern with, you know, you're kind of redoing a dry aisle there? Any concerns with headlights coming out of that or what that's going to do to the properties next door?
Again, this is up high, so the, I don't see that any different than what it is today just because of the, other than the volume of traffic. But as far as the angles and the direction of those lights, that should be the same as what you see today.
Are you, is this, I'm assuming they're getting new lights? Oh, I'm talking car lights, but also the parking lot lights? Are there cutoff lights on those? Or what are you proposing for that?
I'm sorry, I can't speak today because I'm not the electrical engineer. I'm sorry, I can't speak today because I'm not the electrical engineer.
Okay, is there anybody that can speak to that? Will there be cutoff lighting along that edge of the property?
Hi there. Hi, I'm Eric Hamilton with the school district. Yes, we're going to change the lighting. It's going to go to LED. Everything's going to face toward our property, and they're going to be shrouded on the neighbor's sides, so on both sides of that property, it's going to face into our property and be directed... shrouded away from any of the neighbors. So, hopefully, it'll be vastly improved.
So, that'll be all new lighting along there, correct, than it is today? And LED with the cutoff shrouds right along there? Commissioner Nemiroff?
Thanks, Mike. I just want to pop on the lighting and question for Carrie and the rest of the commission. We met with the city of Bloomington not that long ago in a joint meeting, and they had one person... they talked about some new kind of lights that they were using in the neighborhoods and at the Mall of America that seem to improve safety, cutoff, and also be less obtrusive. Is that the kind of lights you're talking about?
I think so. I assume so, but I don't know for sure. I mean, the new technology is much better than it used to be, and they can directionally do it. I mean, LEDs can be much more energy efficient than probably what they have there today in particular, but you can also do different things with them versus the older type fixtures. So, I assume that'd be coming under... back to the city and for review then, correct?
It would, yeah. They'd need an electrical permit, and we'd review that lighting plan to make sure it conforms with our code. And as you recall, we did amend our lighting ordinances, so it's not as bright as you could have in the past.
Okay. And then, back to the Lydia's comments on the bike coalition. You know, you talked about bike... is there any plans to her point on wayfinding for bikes or any additional bike lanes around the site? How is that being addressed, or is it being addressed as we go through this?
There are some plans in... obviously for that, but just this week, we were talking about contingency plans for more bike access on there. I know your comment about if we have more bike racks, perhaps we'll have more bikers. We have located future expansion spots for the bikes, and we've talked about both on the east and west side, how do we mark that bike traffic? How do we make it easier to come in? We're really looking for Nine Mile Creek. Part of the agreement with Nine Mile Creek is to provide that spur at some point where we designate, we want it to go from the district standpoint, so we're looking for ways to increase that and to bring that back in, and so we'll continue to develop those plans as we move forward.
So, ideally, off... coming off of Nine Mile Creek, for example, you'd have a bike path and you'd have a direct access to bike racks or however you do that, so that you're...
Probably the east and west side.
East and west side. Will there be two spurs coming off of there? Or how would it...
Probably one from the east side, just based on how grading works in that area.
Okay. You know, and that... this is part of the second piece of that, right? The bike lane through here, that's part of the second stage, essentially?
Correct.
Okay.
And we have to wait for Nine Mile to finish doing the expansion of the bike path.
Okay. I'd suggest you get her on your side, on your team, too.
Absolutely.
Because it sounds like some good ideas. Christopher Forrest?
I was going to suggest the same thing. Please work with that organization. I think they can be really helpful in as far as, you know, what's really needed versus what's just on paper. And granted, I understand it's going to be congested during, you know, a lot of cars, a lot of walkers, a lot of bikes, and there will be times when they have to intersect and... but I like that suggestion... suggestions that Ms. Reiner brought up. At this point in time, this is when we can address issues that are out there already, and one, you know, let's just presume that there is a drainage issue along that access road there to the... on the west side. Why do you think that's a problem? Why do you think it arose, and what do you think could be done about it?
Part of the issue we have is we weren't the architects or engineers on the work before. Our facilities director for the district wasn't here at that time, and so we don't always have the history for what some of those problems are, but once they're brought to our attention, we'll work towards finding solutions that help alleviate that. Since we are going to be working on building and rebuilding that road to the northwest, it would be an opportunity for us to now look at, is there a concern that we have to understand and address more? And so, part of the comments tonight will help us understand that better and look to resolve in that situation.
Yeah, I guess the engineers' report only mentioned drainage on the east side, you know, as far as a discussion point, and I guess that's why I said, why do you think it... there's a problem? I mean, you may not know exactly what the issue is, but I would like to see that addressed because this is the opportunity to do it, and that shouldn't be... you know, you should minimize any negative impacts on the neighbors whenever you can. That's a big priority. I... oh, I would also like to see that... I would like to add in possibly cutoff lighting as one of the conditions.
You mentioned Nine Mile Creek, that is something I wanted to ask about. Do we have any visibility or certainty as to the timing of that?
Of the Nine Mile Creek project?
Yeah.
I think that it is this summer that they're expanding it. As far as our property at the district is concerned, that expansion is taking place this summer.
Oh, oh, that... okay, great, thank you.
I think it's done over a two-year period roughly for the whole thing to get done. Christopher Strauss?
Yes, Mr. Jux... let's go to the east side. The utility plan, I don't care, can we put C. 1.5? Am I... Well, that probably works, too. One is, are the fields to... on the east side, are there plans to be lit? Are there... is there lighting for those? I'm there at this point? Okay, okay. The other... the drainage issues, I mean, they're showing it's sort of like a retention field that's... is there currently anything capturing water in those... in those fields on the east side there? I mean, I know there's...
Not currently, there's not.
Okay. So, this field is, as it's shown, I mean, it's a whole network of...
Correct.
Storage pipes, I mean...
It's designed to improve drainage.
Because you're moving quite a bit of... I mean, you're bringing all the water from up above down into that, and then it sort of outlets to the north.
Holding in basins underneath the field and then discharging it at a lower rate down into the water shed.
Would it be fair to say that, I mean, that's going to improve...
It's designed to improve.
What... the... over the existing situation?
Correct.
No, correct, okay. The other one, the east property line, currently, I think it's just a chain link fence. Is there any other landscaping changes? Is that still meant to continue to be the border? You know, be the east... east line?
That is the continued border to that side. One of the issues in this area, and we didn't talk about it, was currently in that area is where the tennis courts are located for the high school. We are relocating the tennis courts off of this property and to Creek Valley, and that was one of the issues that the neighbors to the east had, is the volume from the tennis courts, the lighting in that area, the amount of use, and so we've been working with the neighbors to the east to help alleviate those concerns, both for those types of activities as well as some operational issues when trash is picked up, some of those types of things to deal with those concerns. And so, those have been more of the dialogue we've had as opposed to what type of boundary do we have along the site in that area?
So, you'll continue to work with that neighborhood?
District continues to work with the neighbors on both sides.
Okay. Thank you.
There was one other item that came to mind as I was waiting. One of the advantages that we think may be useful in delaying some of the study along Valley View is, once the building is occupied, we will have a chance to study it more scientifically in terms of the number of vehicles coming with the additional students, what the traffic patterns look like, and that may afford us an opportunity to find a more appropriate solution based on what the reality of drivers is as opposed to what the proposed anticipated driver solution might be. So, that might be an advantage to studying further impacts on Valley View.
Christopher Forrest?
Has the Transportation Commission taken a peek at this, even informally?
I don't believe they have, no.
It's something to keep in mind. I mean, if there's... if questions still remain at the council level, they may want to refer back to...
In terms of doing a future joint study kind of thing, certainly, they would be...
And even... yeah, and even just to... for the points that were just brought up regarding actual usage and what types of incentives can be used to affect some of the commuting behavior and stuff, it would be interesting.
Okay, thanks, if we have...
Thank you.
Thank you. So, back up here again. Any further discussion, comments that we haven't... Commissioner Carr?
So, it's back here for discussion now, before we vote on it? Okay.
Correct.
Again, I... I'm concerned about that intersection, moving that drive over to the intersection with Chapel Lane. I think it is going to direct traffic into that neighborhood, and I don't think that by including that option in the report or in the findings is a good solution because then it puts the school district in the position of this is the de facto option, and they have to argue against that and try to convince the city that other options are better. So, I would rather have that condition three modified so that instead of the de facto option being aligning the westmost entrance to make a four-way intersection, that it simply states that the... this would be studied, that traffic control options for westerly driveway entrances on Valley View Road would be studied by the school district and the city engineer without necessarily dictating what those options are. And Carrie, I see that this report was revised February 8th, and was that 3.1 option, was that in the original report, or was that something that was added?
It's the 3A that allowing the... within the next three to five years, that was the addition.
That was... okay, that was added, okay. But nevertheless, I... I'm just concerned, I don't think there's been enough study given to that, and to make that a de facto option, that has to be the option to consider unless something better comes up. I'm not convinced that is the best option, so I'd rather leave it open-ended.
Well, you're leaving a lot of things open-ended, then. I mean...
Well, just that one...
You're not... you're not... you're just... you're leaving... you let them do it. I mean, there's no incentive them for them to do anything if you take anything out of there like that.
Well, that's true, but on the other hand, if you dictate in the report that they must align up...
Well, the report would dictate. It's not what it would say. It would say pending other options that came up. So, I'm just concerned that you're not... you're not forced... you're not any... anything in here to do that.
Well, yeah, and maybe just a...
So, I mean, you're going to... what's going to happen is everyone's going to look at this and go, oh, see, we're not required to do anything, so it's fine as is. And that's what'll happen, so...
Well, I think, again, by putting that option down with the wording and possibly other options as agreed upon in the future, really steers everyone towards that option. I'm not convinced that's the best option. Maybe some wording that, you know, to study these options to include, but not limited to aligning the westmost entrance to make a four-way intersection, at least leaves it open to the possibility that there may be better solutions.
Yeah, I don't disagree necessarily, but I think there still should be some... something in there, and as Commissioner or Carrie had stated before, I mean, maybe that could be wordsmith a little bit different, but those options in there. Commissioner Forrest?
Yeah, I think as soft as I'd want to go would be the language that was suggested earlier by Planner Teague. The reason being that because it's a conditional use permit, our, you know, if there's issues here, we apply the conditions to address them. And pretty much, the city engineer has the say, so I think as it is, I think by saying that unless something else comes up and they can give a convincing argument that, no, this isn't going to work because of this, it's kind of... I think it should be more the city engineers' call versus their... but I think that they brought up some very valid points, and I certainly see your point of view on that. And I guess the other thing that I would say is on that western edge also to use landscaping to address some of the visual and sound issues with the... on that western edge with the neighbors.
Any other comments?
I was just going to say that I actually do agree that there are conflicts on that street and having that pedestrian intersection, you know, right in between two access points. So, I, you know, I kind of agree with what the recommendation is. I agree that we can look at other options, but I would only go as far as like what Carrie had suggested, to maintain that condition and allow them the ability to see if there's something else that would address all the other issues that were brought up, but...
Commissioner Nemiroff?
This is a very challenging matter for us. I mean, I think everyone... it's interesting that there wasn't much discussion about the plans in general that we really thought... I mean, 99% of our discussion was on the traffic, and I think that's because, in my opinion, and I'm going to assume it is for most people, is that this is a... this is a great school system, and we like the plans for expansion, both in terms of what was presented and in terms of just the concept of what's going to happen as a result of them, and so I think we're kind of struggling, how much do we interfere with that, which is really the big dog and the traffic's the tail, although it can be a painful tail. I struggle with this issue after the discussion tonight because I think there are some solutions out there, both engineering and non-engineering. I shared... I shared Plaiditor's comments earlier that we wished that there'd been more... more of a team approach to come up with a resolution to the issue so that we weren't looking necessarily at something that was generated by the engineering department on February 8th as a solution to these issues, because the traffic report is pretty clear that these intersections aren't very good. And I will comment also, the traffic report was done on a day when the weather was really good and there were limited activities at the school, so I think on days when the weather's bad or when there are activities at the school, I think that the traffic will probably be even worse. I'm not ready to take an opinion assertively on this item three. I do think that what I would suggest, while I still think and listen to everyone else, is I would suggest that we add something that there... I... well, let me back up. We're going to have to rely to a certain degree on our school board, our school leadership, our council, and our staff to come up with some good solutions to this, both engineering and non-engineering. I personally am comfortable with the... if we decide to go with an unknown solution from the planning commission, that this group of people will come up with a good solution. That said, I do think... I don't mind the loss of the parking spaces, and I do think that this is a reasonable solution with Commissioner Kivamaki's idea to just stop making... stop letting people turn on chapel, just in, you know, we have a regular law to deal with it. I don't... I think this is a nice solution. You put a traffic monitor in, so I can get comfortable with that. But what I think is more important also, I would... I would suggest that we have at least an encouragement or even a condition that there is a joint task force of city and school district and perhaps other stakeholders to come up with some good resolutions, both engineering and non-engineering, to improve alternate... alternative modes of transportation. That's... I'm still going to think about this item three, though. Thank you.
Any other discussion points or motions or thoughts from the commission on this? I think we've gone through many things, and, you know, to reiterate, at least from my end, from, you know, Commissioner Nemiroff's, is everyone's agreeing this is a great project for the community, for everything. It's how do we... those potential pain points, how are we addressing those, and how can we make it even better if with everything else going on there, and we left something and will be disappointed that we didn't fix something to make everything better along the way? So, and that's kind of the way I'm kind of approaching it. So, and that's kind of the way I'm kind of approaching it. So, there's a lot of fixated on traffic. Again, there really wasn't anything said about the addition. That's great, whatever came up with, I mean, that's, that's all there. So, it's, it's kind of those, it's to those touchpoints between the school and the city right now, I think, is where we're kind of at. Anyone else?
I'm gonna need help, though, Carrie. Well, I recommend approval of the conditional use permit with staff's conditions, but we're gonna have to, so part of those conditions is approving the conditions of the city engineer memo. Do you want me to address those conditions, if we're adjusting them at all?
You could suggest, in, say, Item Seven, you could suggest alternate language to his conditions.
Okay.
So, it's spelled out specifically.
Okay. So, for Item Seven, I would amend some of the conditions of the traffic or the city engineer, and it would be number three. And I would say that for condition number three, that it applies unless another agreeable alternative is approved within that next three and five, three to five years. I also want to make sure that the realignment of the crosswalk is included in that, if that, you know, if the roadway is adjusted, you know, to get that out from between two access points. Okay, so I think that's it with the city engineer. But then I would also like to add a condition that you do work with increasing the pedestrian, bike and pedestrian wayfinding within the site. And I don't know if we can suggest that they work with it, was it the student coalition or student bike coalition or, but I think that's a great idea. I think they've got a good plan, but it would be nice to see a little bit more detail of what the wayfinding actually is and to increase that, and that includes increasing bike racks. And then I'd also suggest, or add a condition that they do look at adding landscaping on that west side, where it was mentioned by the neighbor. And I think that's it.
Cut-off lighting.
What?
Cut-off lighting.
Cut-off, oh, cut-off lights. Okay. That the lighting would also, I thought we agreed that that already meets the conditions, but, okay, so what do you want me to say?
And you knew the parking lot lighting would be cut-off lighting.
Okay.
To not interfere with the neighboring properties.
Okay, great. And so, another condition would be that the parking lot lighting would be cut-off lighting to not interfere with the neighbors, neighboring properties.
No question?
Yes.
What do you mean by the term "cut-off lighting"?
Well, I'm not sure I understand what you mean by "cut-off lighting."
Well, it's an industry term on how lighting is cut off from going in certain directions on the light fixture. If there's a better term, we can certainly use that, but that's what I've seen before.
Okay, 'cause I was just confused. I was thinking that the lights shut off, that's a different term, term not...
That's a different thing. So, when the light is on, that it doesn't shine that way, for example. There's a barrier there that it doesn't necessarily go in that direction. I mean, nothing's ever perfect, but it's...
Okay, that's fine.
It's, yeah. Hang on.
I just had, I had another question, and, help me, maybe I'm missing something. And Carrie, this question might be for you. Where, where does it say, where are we covering no increase in stormwater? Is that...
Ultimately, that's with the watershed district, as they are our regulatory authority. But in speaking with our city engineer, he's comfortable with this plan, that there's gonna be no increase in runoff to adjacent residential properties.
Well, we have a motion right now, that, yeah...
I was just wondering if you should add that.
Well, hang on, let's, so, we have a motion with that, so right now, is there a second for the motion at that point? Okay, so we have a motion and second for that piece. Now, is there anything, Commissioner Nemiroff, what was, what was your comment on?
Yeah, Commissioner Olson has, has added it. If I could ask maybe a friendly amendment is, and I don't know how enforceable it is, but that, that the bike and alternative, bike and pedestrian transit be more than just wayfinding, that they have a broader scope of, training of incentives and others, and other solutions for the traffic issue, both near-term and long-term. I don't know how enforceable that is.
Well, this is suggesting that it's with the living streets policy, for example. I mean, that, that covers a lot of that.
Right, I would accept that.
Okay. As a friendly amendment?
As a friendly amendment.
Okay. So, we have motion and seconded, is there any further comments?
Commissioner Nemiroff's comment about no increased runoff, was this, was that part of another motion?
It's a condition of options.
Okay.
That was already in there.
It's in there, okay.
That was in there, as the initial ones. Commissioner Forrest?
I guess my concern is that if, if there are already negative impacts because of the structure that's there, to say there's not going to be any further runoff is saying, well, we'll just keep it running that way, the way it's been running because of the negative things that were done a few years back. So, I guess my concern is that, that if there are negative impacts of water running onto neighbors' properties, that that should be fixed and, and in some way, or assessed and addressed, let's put it that way. I don't know if it's gonna be a part of that, but, I mean, it sounded like they have to restructure everything, but I mean, we need to, they should be paying for the drains, not the residents, if the water is coming off of their property, is that kind of thing. And I understand that during construction, things might be a little different than when the job is finished, but I really think that it's something that, if there's any way of, going backwards in time, I guess, that if there's any way of addressing the drainage issue that's currently there, I'd like to see that.
Well, I forgot to ask, the second, or are you okay with the language?
I have the second, yeah.
Okay. Motion seconded, any further discussion? Commissioner Carr?
I'm confused exactly as to what now the motion is, and, I don't know, Planner Teague, do you think you could recite exactly what the motion is for us as a planning commission?
I can give it a shot. So, the motion is to approve with the staff conditions with the additions that we revise the engineering memo, that it read align the western, the westmost entrance to make a four-way intersection with Chapel Lane unless another agreeable alternative is agreed upon between the city and the school district. Eight is, well, work with, update that pedestrian and bike wayfinding plan onsite and add additional bike racks. Nine is add additional landscaping along the western lot line. And ten is lighting to be cut off, downlit away from the neighbors, meet city code.
And just adjusting the pedestrian crosswalk to adding that...
Oh, that's right, I do have that, yep. Align the sidewalk to go along with that, that western, yep.
Yes?
I think we talked about some things that are kind of amorphous or whatever, that we wouldn't want as conditions, but could we also send along the message clearly versus just in the minutes, recommendations to the council to consider things like runoff that was a result of previous work on that particular road, working with the bike coalition, compliance with the living streets policy going forward as much as possible, things like that. If those issues could be brought directly to the attention along with our recommendation for the conditions, that would be great.
If that's agreed upon by the rest of the...
Well, I think that, that's not part of the motion, right? Right, so let's, let's, let's do that first, and then if there's things on there, so, do you have a comment before we vote?
Yes, I had suggested that friendly addition of the, putting a task force together to look at things to improve bike and pedestrian transportation above and beyond the wayfinding. I can't remember if that was accepted or not.
It was.
And if that was captured.
Yeah, and I think you worded that in there.
Okay, thank you. I didn't quite catch that, but thank you.
So, I have motion seconded, have a vote on that. Commissioner Carr?
Just for purposes of landscaping condition, I would think we, again, I don't have the plan in front of me, and I don't know if it's feasible in all areas to put landscaping, additional landscaping, so we might want to phrase it, to the extent feasible, add additional landscaping on the west side to help screen westerly residences, or something to that effect.
Is that acceptable to the motion or a second, or, pardon?
Another friendly amendment?
Apparently, it was.
Yeah, that's, I don't know if that was an amendment, but it's in line with what the proposal was, but it's just an expansion to reflect the purpose of the landscaping.
So, it's a friendly amendment expansion. Is that acceptable to the motion or in the second, or?
I'd say to address visibility, drainage, and other, and any other negative impacts that could be addressed by landscaping, I guess, but not just the visibility, but, because that'll help with the plantings to help with some of the drainage issues, too.
We're still on landscaping, right?
Right.
Okay.
In other words, there's a purpose to act, it's not just aesthetic that we're saying that, I think that's a really good point, that we're not just saying, oh, make it look prettier by putting more landscaping, but it's, we're recommending it for reasons, but, thank you.
Okay, Carrie, one last time, can you read back the, so we have the city conditions, which are one through six?
Correct.
Requirements?
And then seven is to revise the city engineer's memo to add the option for another agreeable alternative to the realignment of Chapel Lane. And that includes the realignment of the sidewalk. Eight is work with the pedestrians and the bike, the wayfinding, add bike racks. Nine is add that landscaping to the extent feasible. And ten is the lighting to be cut off, downlit away from the neighbors.
Okay. So, motion seconded, those are gonna be the conditions, so that's what we're voting on right now. So, who's in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Commissioner Forrest, if you want to make a statement on something else to go along with it, it's not part of the motion, but if you want a, another statement, that's, that would be your statement at that point.
I guess, I just wanted it to be reflected in some way, more directly than waiting a month for the minutes, for the city council to, to understand these points of discussion that we've had, especially regarding the living streets issues and negative impacts on neighbors, to be alleviated as much as possible.
If I might add, I think, I can speak for each of the council members, they all watch the planning commission meeting, and then we do get a draft of the minutes to them, so they'll have the minutes in front of them. It's, it's in draft form, so Jackie's got her work cut out in the next couple of days, but they will, they will get the message.
Okay, thanks. So, that one's passed, then?
This will go to the city council next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday? Oh, that's soon already?
Yep.
Okay, Jackie will be busy. Great, thank you, everyone. So, so next on the agenda is community comment. This is a time when anyone can come forth and, and speak to any items that are not on the city council agenda, or, excuse me, the planning commission agenda. If you want to come forth, you have three minutes, if everyone could please step out and speak in the lobby, please? So, getting back to the community comment, if anyone wants to come forth and, and comment, now is your time. Pardon? If you want to speak for three minutes, you can. Not on, not on, not on the top, I'm sorry, not on the topic that was previously discussed, yes. This is for, yeah. No problem. Seeing no one come forth, I take a motion, close, community comment? Do I have a second? Who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, community comment is closed. Up next is reports and recommendations. I'm not aware of any tonight. Any correspondence petitions? The, in your packets, the correspondence was, there's some city council pieces, then also the attendance report, so take a look at that, make sure everything's in line. Share and member comments. My only comment is I'm still working on the, the charter for the comprehensive plan, still, still working on that. Carrie, do you have any, I guess, or, I'm, excuse me, any other member comments before we leave that? Commissioner Carr?
The Greater Southdale Work Group is continuing to meet, and will be meeting in the near future, to again look at a Phase Two aspect of the project, and we're nearing a recommendation to the city council. Is that correct, Planner Teague?
That is correct. I might add, too, that I've been able, I met with our consultant earlier this week, got a preview of the deliverables package, so he's kind of fine-tuning that. We're trying to set a date, we want to pick a date that we can get the best attendance from the work group. So, there's a few dates floating out there, we're trying to pick a date within the next week or two, to get the group together to then view those deliverables. And then we intend to come to the planning commission at a work session, and we're, right now, we're thinking about, I believe it's the March 23rd meeting, that we might have a work session along with the transportation commission before your meeting, but we'll, we'll finalize that in the future, and I'll send out an email if we've selected that date, and then we would have that...
So, start at six o'clock or something on that?
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
So, that would be both with the Southdale piece, the transportation, and the planning commission?
Yes, yeah, so it's kind of presenting the deliverables firsthand in a work session kind of setting with the transportation commission.
Who would be presenting that, or who would?
We would have, we would have Mick, the consultant, come in and present the, the full package, with the idea of going to the city council then in April. Again, these are just tentative, that's kind of our tentative plan.
Yep, yep. Obviously, you'll publish that in advance for anyone that wants to, to come along with that, too. Yes, sir?
My, my negative vote was on principle. I think sometimes we get a little prescriptive and get really vague in some of the conditions we put on, so I just felt, I knew it was gonna, that was probably not in doubt, but I just think, I think a lot of wishless and kind of very ambiguous terms and items get put on some of those permits, and that, I'm slightly uncomfortable with that. I like to be very strict as to what we're looking at and the terms we're implying, and conditions that we impose are not just, we want them to do something, but we want an outcome of that. So, I think sometimes we want them to involve a group, or, to me, probably, in my strict sense, I don't want to, I'm not as comfortable as that as some people are, so I guess I voted no out of principle as opposed to the project itself.
So, it was a little too ambiguous for you on some of the conditions, is that what you're saying?
I struggle sometimes with those, will they need to involve this group? And I think, is that the right group to involve, and is it our position to tell the school district that they need to work with this group of students? You know, I think their management, school leadership is probably better, you know, better equipped to decide who they should be working with, but I'm a pretty hands-off sort of person, so I think that's...
Point taken. Any other member comments? Any staff comments?
Nothing else for me.
Well, just, the commission's meeting, I just saw a memo about candidates.
Oh, the boards and commissions dinner, yes. I believe it's February 29th, we've had, I sent out an email to the group, if you wouldn't mind RSVP-ing to that. It's the introduction to the new members coming on, and a thank you to those going off.
So, I was, yeah, I forgot to mention that. So, right now, or at least last week, I believe, I don't know if Commissioner Carr, if you got to any, but there were interviews for the next upcoming folks, both on this commission and all the other boards and commissions within the city, so unfortunately, Commissioner Forrest will be leaving us in, I think, a couple meetings, roughly, maybe one more. So, we'll have to, so, thank you for all your service, and it's been nine years, right? I believe? You look, you look shocked and surprised at that, but...
She started as a high school?
Yeah, that's, she was nineteen when she started. But thanks for all your service, and I'm sure we'll chat... But thanks for all your service, and I'm sure we'll chat again on this. I certainly appreciated your help and, and guidance over the years I've been on here and helping out with the city. So just, just so you know, her, it's coming to a, to a close, and we'll have a, one new member starting, this would be the first weekend, or, excuse me, the first March meeting, is that typically when we've been doing that? I think, like, March 1st is kind of the, the stop now, I think, on things, right? So, so we'll have cookies next time, right? Okay, perfect. Those are my comments. Anything else? All right, seeing nothing else, I take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. See you in a couple weeks.